Everyone, the time is 5:34 PM. It is Tuesday, January 5th, and I'm going to call this special city council meeting to order with the city secretary. Please call the roll.
Mitchell?
Here.
Coach?
Here.
Ellison?
Present.
Flores-Kale?
Here.
Rizzo?
Here.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Tobias?
Here.
All right, seven members present. We have a quorum. Next up, citizen comments. At this time, we ask anyone who wants to come and speak to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, and you make those comments to the mayor and council. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Do I have anyone signed up? Do we have anyone virtually signed up? All right. If there are no objections, I'm going to go ahead and close citizen comments, period. Next up, executive session. Councilmember Flores-Kale.
Pursuant to Chapter 551 of Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene at the executive session from time to time as deemed necessary. During this meeting, the city council may convene at the executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics: Pending or contemplated litigation or to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to Section 551.071, 1,000 West RM150 Utility Connection; convene at the executive session pursuant to Section 551.087, Texas Government Code, to deliberate regarding the offer of economic incentives to one or more business projects that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city; project Goldfish; project Eb-berni?
Convene?
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by councilmember Tobias, that we reconvene. Is there... All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. There was no action taken. There will be no action... During executive session, there will be no action taken now. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by councilmember Rizzo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries. Now, we're going to take about 60 seconds to let the feed switch over and start our regular meeting. Evening, everyone. The time is 7:08 PM. It is Tuesday, January 5th, and I'm going to call this regular city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag...
To the flag...
...of the United States of America...
For which it stands...
For which it stands...
...under God...
Under God...
Indivisible...
Indivisible and just as for all.
Would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Coach?
I don't think you heard you.
Coach?
Here.
Ellison?
Present.
Flores-Kale?
Here.
Rizzo?
Present.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Tobias?
Here.
All right, seven members present. We have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for city council special meeting and regular council meeting for December 15th, 2020.
Second.
It's been moved by councilmember Tobias, seconded by councilmember Bradshaw, that we approve the minutes for December 15th, 2020. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, citizen comments, period. At this time, we ask anyone who wishes to come forward and speak to the audience to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a public comments form and submit that to either the city secretary or myself. I have one person here registered to speak, Mr. James Sadler.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, city council. Thank you this evening for your time. I understand I may be off topic from what is actually on the agenda, but I'm simply a citizen that wants to be heard. My name is James Sadler. I live in the Button Creek neighborhood. I am a resident of District 2, and I'm a retired Army veteran and currently work in the national defense industry. I came tonight with a lot of statistics. I planned to wow and dazzle you with some numbers, but I realized that, in the end, numbers can be made to support any claim you want to make and any position of interest. So basically, I've chosen to forego those. I don't speak for everyone, but I believe I speak for many. Simply put, what's the end state of masking and limiting of businesses in the community? And what is the criteria to end these states of emergency and masking mandates? I've spent hours, many hours, researching, and I feel no closer to understanding the end state, and the information I have found may be outdated. I understand that the city simply responds to county and state directives. However you are, our local representatives, and what can we do locally? On April 30th, I'm sorry, March 13th, 2020, under Section 418014 of the Texas Code, Governor Abbott certified that COVID-19 did pose an imminent threat of danger and disaster to the state of Texas. In each 30 days, he's reinstated that. The mask mandate was issued on July 2nd, and there is no end date to that. The city and this county proclamations were made before the state mandate of mask and have not been updated, and there are some discrepancies in those. I question the authority of some of the state orders. Among those is, in the governor's sites, a proclamation by the state health commissioner. The state health commissioner cites Texas Code 81.082 Delta, which gives the authority for one 30-day emergency period and then one 30-day extension. We're past that. Again, the county hasn't updated its fourth order related to COVID, and the city has not updated its continuing declaration of disaster since June 2nd of 2020 that I could find. The end state, I ask that the city update the orders to encompass the most recent state mandates, to include the executive orders GA 29 and GA 32, and update the penalties, and really for all elected officials at this level and above to simply examine the physical, mental, and economic costs borne by the citizenry of these measures that are there. I understand Texas may be better than some states, but when are we going to get back to normal? In closing, I'm simply a frustrated citizen. I believe in an infringement on my own person to be told what to wear and how to wear a mask, and the end date is a moving target. We are not meant to be muzzled. I want to know what the criteria is to go back to normal. Is it COVID eradication? Is it COVID pandemic... endemic versus pandemic status, and what defines it? I'd like to thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, James. That is the only citizen comment that I have. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close citizen comments, period. All right, next up, appointments. Agenda item number five, appoint nominee for position on the Kyle Ethics Commission. Councilmember Flores-Kale.
Thank you, Mayor and city council members. So my nominee is going to be Rebecca Chappa. Rebecca possesses several key qualities, which I consider non-negotiable in my nominee. First and foremost, Rebecca is honest and follows good moral standards. She's respectful, humane, just, and mindful. I've seen this firsthand during... Oops, sorry. Rebecca not only encourages initiatives, but never hesitates to act when she sees an injustice. I've seen this firsthand during several different city council meetings, both on and off the dais. Rebecca does an excellent job confronting situations with a cool mind and a soft heart. She's the epitome of what an ethical person should look like. In addition to her amazing qualities, Rebecca's active roles and deep roots in the community are a plus. The Chappa family has given much of their time and energy for many years. As many of us know, Chappa Middle School proudly bears her last name. The committee would greatly benefit from Rebecca and all she has to offer.
Okay, thank you. Any thoughts or comments?
Here.
Councilor Rizzo.
I just want to commend you on your nomination. I think it's a great nomination. I've had many conversations with Ms. Chappa, and always found her very interesting, enlightening. I know she cares about the community, and that's always a plus, when you care about where you grew up, where you live, and the people that have moved here as well. So I think it's a great nomination.
Thank you. Other comments? I have some comments on this one. I draw a different conclusion. It's not meant to be punitive, but I've said for a very long time that the... As far as my opinion of who I would vote for, that members of the Ethics Commission should be perceived as being apolitical and without an ax to grind. Ms. Chappa has very much made herself known to the entire council. In particular, she has made comments that were derogatory towards individual council members, brought staff issues up in the past, and I think that the Ethics Committee, in particular, is supposed to be a group of citizens that do not have that reputation and image from this board. It's supposed to be someone who is not perceived as being overly political, but rather someone who can take a dispassionate approach and methodically analyze and draw conclusions, and that's just not been my personal experience with Ms. Chappa. And so for that, for myself, she's not somebody who I would support. But it's not to say... It's not meant to cast dispersions on her, but just to say that that's the way I have perceived her through the years. Those are my comments. Does anybody else have thoughts?
I'd like to say something. This is Councilman Tobias with regard... I have known Rebecca Chappa for mostly most of my life. I know her background, but I also know that she is somebody who is really involved in the community, including the Hayes ISD School District. She is involved, I believe, with Lehman High School in that area, and I've seen her work with a lot of students, and I applaud her for all her hard work when it comes to that. So with that, I just wanted to let you know that Ms. Chappa, that I do... I personally hold high regard for you, and I know that when it comes down to whatever has happened in the past, with whatever has gone on with councils in the past, it is time to move forward, and I feel that you would have that high degree of rapport and be able to do a good job appointing to this commission.
All right, thank you.
I just want to say... I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Is that okay? I just want to say that I commend you for all of the things that you've done for the community. Unfortunately, I haven't seen you in that capacity. I've only seen you with what you've presented in the meetings, and I would like to see someone with a little bit less bias on the Ethics Committee, and someone who is able to make an objective conclusion on the situations at hand.
Other thoughts?
Yeah, I'd also like to say that just because somebody doesn't agree with the city or a person on dais, that does not make them unethical. In fact, it is unethical in my book to sit back and watch an injustice be done and sit back and say nothing. So for people who might take this personally, I know, because I've talked to the whole Chappa family, what their intent is, and they have solid hearts, and they have good backgrounds, and they've never been seen as disloyal or dishonest. So my take on them is that their heart is in a good place, and I hope that other people can see through any kind of past issues that they have on a personal level and vote according to what they think is ethically correct.
Any other comments?
First of all, I'd just like to say, when it comes to service, you've got to have that background. You have to have that history in the community, and I can tell you from experience that it's not easy to have that kind of a background. It takes a lot of time, a lot of commitment, a lot of sacrifices. I want to applaud you for all the sacrifices you've done, especially what you've done for cancer research. That's something that's really touched my family, and for you to do all that you do with the runs and the walks here in this area, I really commend you. I know you've made an impact on my daughter when you handed her a little thing, that one little event we had here on the square. So it's something that I really look forward, because bringing the next generation and it's showing them that everybody can make a difference. It doesn't matter if you're male or female. If you care about the community and you've served in it, then, you know, you've put the work and the time and the effort. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilwoman Ellison.
So I too have met with Ms. Rebecca Chappa. I've met with the Chappa family. I've been in their home to have discussions. And then councilmember Flores-Kale did a great job of giving a general synopsis of what Ms. Chappa and her family and parents have done and been involved in this community. I think the other... My other colleagues here have as well expressed the involvement in this city, and I agree with that, you know, even though, you know, I've felt some type of way certainly, even with my efforts to engage and build bridges there, that I've felt that it kind of wasn't wanted in many ways. But so, and I agree that we need people like that involved, and I think Ms. Rebecca Chappa does display a community-minded citizen that we need, regardless if it's in agreement with my ideals or not. If we... So I agree with that, those credentials. You know, if we're talking about any one of our committees, like planning and zoning, our parks committee, there are various other different committees running for city council. I think all of those are great credentials for those types of boards and committees and bodies. I think the Ethics Commission is a different type of body, though, and we have to think about what the Ethics Commission is charged with doing. It certainly isn't about community involvement. It certainly isn't about planning or parks or anything with the city. It is simply being called upon when that time comes. It's not a regular meeting. When it comes time for either a person on this body or a staff member to be brought before the Ethics Commission to be ruled objectively against or for, or what have you, that is the body in which we're talking about. So I certainly appreciate my colleagues expressing even further, some of which I already knew, some of which maybe I didn't know, about Mrs. Chappa's service to this city. I just want to kind of remind my colleagues that's... This particular commission and body is not like other commissions and bodies. And so do we... Do those that have spoken up already feel there's a difference between the Ethics Commission and other bodies and other commissions, or is that not the same? Because I think that's probably, listening to the objection of the mayor and then listening to the affirmations of my colleagues, there seems to be a difference of opinion perhaps of what the goal and task at hand for an Ethics Commission.
Well, for myself, if you're putting that question to the body, it's the... Do I believe that Ms. Chappa would give a fair ruling if any of the seven members of this body or any particular council member or staff member was being brought up on ethical charges? For myself, I haven't experienced that, and so I think this body's job is to bring someone forward who we believe has demonstrated that very fair, calm demeanor, and that has the reputation of being very fair, apolitical, generally speaking, and not demonstrating that they have an ax to grind, in particular towards individual members of council and/or staff. So that's the reason for me. I mean, it's just as simple as that, and so that's why there's a confirmation process. Does anybody have any response to Councilwoman Ellison or additional thoughts?
If I may. So I thought long, long, long and hard about who I wanted to choose, and there were lots of options for me, but I was trying to figure out what defines an ethical person, who's going to make a decision based on honesty and morals and respect and humane and mindfulness and being just. And regardless of what they have... They, meaning the whole Chappas, have said at previous meetings, they were always respectful. They never lied. They were always honest. They never come off as anything else besides good people. And if you know Mr. and Mrs. Chappa, there's no way they could have children that were any less than ethical. So there were times that Rebecca and I would be talking, and she, without even knowing, she was very forgiving in a situation, and it made me change my mind, and it made me see things in a more positive way. She made a statement, and then she would go ahead and say "but," and then she would explain a different point of view. And for someone to be able to do that to me, who can see a situation in 15 different views, is meaningful. So I didn't pick this lightly. I had three or four people prior to her, but when I sat down and I thought about it, who is going to represent something that I... Like someone who has morals as high as me, and you know, maybe not everybody thinks that, but I feel like I'm a pretty moral person, who's going to make a just call? You know, I've heard her say things that I don't agree with, and I was like, we're having a conversation, or you know, we're talking, you think that she's just going to agree with me, and she doesn't, because at the end of the day, right is right and wrong is wrong. And I'm not always right in what I think, and she's never afraid to tell me that. She's never afraid to say, "Hey, Yvonne, I don't believe that way. I think this." And nine out of 10 times, she's right.
Thank you. Anyone else have comments? Councilwoman Ellison. You're muted, sir. Dex, you're muted.
Certainly, if anybody else wants to speak, I know we have a decorum here on council to allow everybody a chance to speak before we take back through, so I'll certainly digress if someone else wants to speak next.
And no one else had their hands raised?
So I certainly understand your point, and we all have an approach to our... Pretty much our only straight-up appointment that we make as council members. I certainly took an approach of finding someone who no one knew and has never been involved in anything and never displayed a registered voter, of course, participant in the city in that manner, but never displayed any kind of feelings, either type of way, positive or negative, directly to council members. So I understand what you're saying about that Ms. Chappa putting aside past grievances or... And you're also, to councilmember Tobias's point, asking your colleagues to put aside past grievances or things that they've seen that may be refuting what has been said tonight about Ms. Chappa being objective. So you're essentially asking your colleague to do that, and then you're asking them to have some faith that Ms. Chappa would do that as well. And so that's a particular ask of your colleagues to do. I've certainly, in the past, have objected to an Ethics Commissioner for reasons that I felt were... There were ambitions and as far as engagement towards certain council members that I didn't think was appropriate for Ethics Commission. I was also on record for saying that same person, I would vote for them for any other board or commission with this city, except the Ethics Commission, because I felt like there was a difference between a person of service, even if I disagree with them, or what have you, or what they've done towards the council, or particular persons on the council. That is different with other bodies and boards and commissions within our city. The Ethics Commission, I think, is particularly a board and body of people that, in my opinion, should be an objective body of people that can look at something that's presented to them, have all the facts, and be able to put their personal feelings aside in order to rule on that. And essentially, I guess that's what we're trying to decide if we feel Ms. Chappa could do that.
Any other thoughts? Councilor Rizzo.
So I just want to start off with, I've known Rebecca Chappa pretty much her entire life. She's a lifelong resident of Kyle. I've known her. I've known her credibility. I've known what an intelligent young lady she is. One of the things that I've learned from Ms. Chappa is there is no hate in her heart. There's no reason to want to hurt somebody credibly if it's not for a vendetta. They have been here outspoken. Everything that they've always talked about, in one way or another, has been about concerns in their neighborhood, or if they've been attacked themselves. It's just them defending themselves, not really looking for retribution or retaliation. It was them just coming back and saying, "Look, this isn't right." So one of the things that I have learned with really dealing with Chappas a lot more lately is that they're not the type of people that hold grudges, and that's something that's a very rare quality sometimes, especially when they've been, you know, sometimes it feels like attacked, you know, as a family. They... They're not the type of people that are going to hold on to things like that, because if you hold on to the grudges like that and you hold on to things like that in life, you're never going to be able to move on as a person. You're going to hold things within you, and in order to continue to be a good person like Chappas are, I guarantee you, they put things aside, and they don't carry them with them every day. They don't think about it 24/7. They go through the situation, they move on, and that's why they're really, really good people. I really have enjoyed getting to know them even more now as a council member, and I truly support that and feel that Ms. Chappa will do a great job on the Ethics Committee, and she would not be coming after anyone with a vendetta. I can promise you that. Thank you.
Any other comments?
If I may.
Sure, and can you end with a motion? We needed to end this.
Absolutely.
Just to have a vote. I feel sorry for Ms. Chappa for myself. I don't want to be up here saying what I'm saying. I don't have a choice.
I'm...
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Go ahead, and then let's get the vote going.
Okay, I'm just going to say, I don't think we should limit our nominees because of a previous situation that has occurred. That may or may not... There may come a day that none of us will ever be in front of the Ethics Commission. God willing, I never am... Not commission, but you know, have anything go against me. We also shouldn't want to punish the residents because they've lived in Kyle all their lives, and they're passionate about their city. Can she do the job? Can she be unbiased? Is she a moral person? All that, to me, is more important than if there's been previous arguments or discussions about the city and about how it should be set up. I don't think that's a fair assessment. And then I'll end it.
With a motion?
With a motion. I've never made a motion.
To approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Rebecca Chappa for the Ethics Commission.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by councilmember Flores-Kale, seconded by councilmember Tobias, that we approve Rebecca Chappa to the Ethics Commission. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Yes.
Coach?
No.
Mitchell?
Nay.
Rizzo?
Aye.
Rizzo?
Aye.
Ellison? Ellison?
Aye.
Tobias?
Aye.
Bradshaw?
I'm sorry, no.
All right, motion passes, four to three. Next up, agenda item number six, appoint nominee for position on City of Kyle Ethics Commission. This is my item. Mr. Rubson has been my ethics nominee, has been approved by this board prior. He serves in many ways in the community as well. He's also an election judge and has served as an election judge. He's well-known to me, typifies and embodies unbiased, apolitical service to the community, which is why I look for him. He's someone who I believe would give rulings equally based on the merits of the case, and has demonstrated and is well-known for that and well-respected in the community for that. And so, with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve Mr. Rubson.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tobias. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to just, I never want to be remiss to say my gratitude for what Mr. Mike Rubson has done for the City of Kyle. I'm very happy to support him on the Ethics Commission. I cannot agree anymore with what the mayor said about Mr. Rubson. He's been a shining example of probably one of the most straight shooters I know, to be honest with you. He tells me when he disagrees with me, he tells me when he agrees with me. It's always straightforward. He calls it how he sees them, the ultimate umpire in my book. It's good to see you, Mike, you and Vicki, and I'll happily vote for you on the commission.
Any other discussion? Councilor Rizzo?
Mayor, I just want to commend you on your nomination, renomination of Mr. Mike Rubson. I have had the privilege of serving with Mike on the task force for the PD, and Mike's knowledge and his commitment to our city, I get to see it in our meetings, and his passion for our city, the law enforcement, and the citizens completely. And I think it's a great nomination, and I think Mike is an example of what citizen involvement is, and I want to thank Mike for all he does for our city.
Thank you. Anything else? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number seven, consider appointment, appointing Derek Turley to the Alliance Regional Water Authority Board of Directors to replace Tracy Scheel. We had discussion in the past about putting an elected official on there. The other cities do have elected officials, but we have not been able to get anyone who wants to volunteer to be on that board. So, I believe Mr. Wilder has a nominee, or someone who he would like to bring forward. Go ahead, Harper.
Hi, yes, from Mayor Council, Harper Wilder, Public Works Director. Derek Turley works here with us at Public Works in the water and the operations, Treatment Operations Division. Derek has 12 years of experience, Backflow Preventer Assembly Tester, Customer Service Inspector, C-Groundwater Licenses. He's currently working to test for his A license, West Water Collection II license, and West Water Treatment D license. Derek's very good hand, knowledgeable person, and we're very happy to have him here.
Thank you, Harper. I didn't hear where that came from. Oh, Councilor Ellison, go ahead.
Councilmember Ellison, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment Derek Turley to the Argo Board to replace Tracy Scheel.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilperson Ellison, seconded by Councilwoman Rizzo. Is there any further discussion?
Real quick, this is Councilman Tobias. I just want to say, thank you, Mr. Harper, for appointing this individual. By looking at it, he has experience frontline with the job itself, with the 12 years of experience, and so I think that's really going to help. I understand that we've, in the past, had an elected official there, but you're going to have somebody that actually is doing the work, and that knows exactly what's going on. So, I think that'd be a great choice, and I think he would serve the city well, being appointed to this regional board. Thank you.
Yes, sir. This was also my Treatment Division's manager, Tim Sanford. It was his candidate as well, so we're both on board with him.
That's great. Thank you very much for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or motions? Do we already have that on the table? I'm so sorry. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, CIP Road Projects and Consent Agenda Presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Leon Barbra, City Engineer. Mayor and Council, since our last meeting, there hasn't been a whole lot of activity, mainly because of the holidays and the weather, but we have had a little bit of progress in some of the projects. But I'll go ahead and get started with some of the projects that you're familiar with. Lehman Road, again, we're still trying to close that project out. There's usually quite a bit of paperwork involved in closing these projects out. Burleson Street, we're still at the same spot we worked the last time. Number of the punch list items have been addressed, but there's still a few items remaining on that list, so we're still trying to wrap that project up. Wendy Hill Street and Drainage Project, it's about 16% complete based on their last pay estimate. We, as you know, we began construction November 30th of 2020. Some of the walls are complete, and the box culvert. I just wanted to point out that the existing box culverts were there, not that you'll remember these numbers, but I did want to mention it. Initially, we had two 7-foot by 3-foot box culverts there. They didn't, they could barely, they didn't even handle the two-year event. Today, we have five, 8-by-5 box culverts, 8-foot by 5-foot box culverts. That's about 200 square feet versus the 42 square feet we have there of opening on that particular structure. We had intentionally tried to design this for 25-year design based on the old rainfall criteria that we had before, Atlas 14, but we didn't quite make the 25. We're between the 10 and 25-year design on this particular structure. But it's obviously much better than what we had there before. Right now, they're working on the north half of the road. The south side is, sorry, they're working on the south side of the roadway. They are getting that ready to complete that, and then that's on the Phase 2 part of the construction. This kind of shows you detail over the limits of the project. It goes from Wendy Hill back to past Purple Mountain, Purple Martin, I'm sorry, Purple Martin. And it is, they're working on the south side of this project right now. And again, Phase 3 will be the north half. On the south side, wastewater improvements, we're still showing 71%. Not a lot of activity on the project since we last met. This is a picture of the list station. It's starting to look really, really good. There's still a few items remaining to be done on the list station, but it's looking really good. We still have the same crews out there working on the list station, the Gravity and Reclaim Water Lines under the Texas Department of General Justice facility, and that third crew is working on that last floor. They're about a third of the way through with that one. The expansion project, we're at 27% complete. We just got the recent pay estimate, so that'll be updated later. They're continuing to work on the same items, the pipe, reformer, rebar and concrete, and duck banks and the manholes on the site. We're still holding our schedule, as we plan to open this up in the spring of 2022. It's a really good picture overall of the site. It's, quite a bit of work has happened, and you can see some of the projects, some of the facilities are almost finished, so we're making good progress on this particular project. The Bunton Creek Interceptor, the erosion control measures are completed. We had some issues with the manholes that were called out on the project, so we had to redesign those manholes. So, they're supposed to be coming in, and hopefully we'll start trenching and starting putting some of those, that line in next week. Well, site number four, you can see that the contractor has mobilized. The tank has been drained, so they're getting ready to start work on the interior and exterior of the facility to get that sandblasted and repainted. Oak Post Road, we have our next meeting scheduled with Hayes County on January 13th to continue our coordination. We're still waiting for one more item on our permitting from Tech dot. We're still continuing our negotiations with the adjacent property owners that we're trying to, where we're trying to straighten that intersection at County Road 158 and Oak Post Road. We did talk to Hayes County about the interlocal. They're going to try to get that to us, so we can at least have it ready for one of the council meetings in February. The Casseta Ranch Roundabout, we did start construction back in November. They estimated that that time, the duration would be three months. It's about 70% complete, really hasn't changed a lot from the last time. What happened is that this project has been delayed because they made a big effort to at least open up the road east and west. The north connection is still closed except for southbound traffic. And based on the fact that they have made some adjustments to the schedule, and did try to open it up in the east-west direction, they're telling me that it's going to be another six to eight weeks before they complete everything. According to the developer, they're going to try to start construction on Opalane mid next week, and that's when they'll be closing off the Opalane Road. And that's my presentation. Did y'all have any questions?
Thank you, Leon. Councilor Rizzo?
Yeah, Leon, just real quick, Councilmember Rizzo for the record. I just want to thank you for all your hard work, you and Harper, and seeing these projects to where they are right now. I underst, Wendy Hill being opened up, I know that's a big relief, but with the Casseta Ranch Roundabout, I know that was a challenge. I know there's still some issues we have to take care of, but seeing traffic flow through there has really helped a lot. And I know that it wasn't easy. I know the developers, it's kind of been rushed a little bit with us, but at the same time, I want to make sure that we take care of those issues that we were looking at, that we've discussed as far as the widths, and make sure that we're able to allow the traffic that we're looking for to go through there, you know, school buses, things like that, and that nature. Just make sure that we can do that. One of the things I want to ask is with the roundabouts, it seemed like it was a little bit more challenging this time around. Is that because the engineers who engineered that didn't have much experience with roundabouts in this area? Because they're not really real, real common. But is that kind of what we're running into? And do we have city standards that we could, or, you know, we could send an engineer that's thinking about putting a roundabout in our city that has the widths and the specs for it?
Councilmember, we reviewed those plans, and we provided the engineer. What's happened is the engineer that designed that particular roundabout no longer works for the developer. They hired a different engineer to work on this particular project. But the previous engineer was provided a set of guidelines that we've created internally that we use, were developed by the Federal Highway Administration. They're really good guidelines, so those were provided to that engineer. And so, we know there's some issues with it, and we're working with the consultant, the current consultant and the contractor to make sure that those get addressed, to make sure that we can have our buses and our trucks going through there without any problems.
I appreciate that, Leon. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Councilmember Tobias, I just want to echo off of what Councilwoman Rizzo was saying. I appreciate all the hard work that everybody's been done on this. I think that was the big issue that we were looking at the other day, was the width of the traffic that was going through. You had a lot of big trailers and trucks that were going through, and my biggest concern was the school buses. Since school started up, I believe today, that was one of my big issues that I was kind of really concerned about, especially it's being very dark out there in the early morning hours. You're going to have buses out there, they may not see those curbs that make those real sharp turns. So, I'm sure that you guys are working on that as well. But I did speak to a resident, actually, this morning. Opening up that southbound has really helped a lot. Cut back traffic, especially in the areas where I live out in Kensington and go forth. And I guess, once the project's complete, maybe I could get this from Mr. Sellers, will the street lights still be operational until the project is completely done? Or are we looking at maybe later on installing some lights at BB and Daisy? I'm just looking at that.
Are you talking about the signals?
Yes, sir.
The traffic signals? That is a question I have asked the county, and I'm still waiting on our response, but that is part of their first phase of DC lane improvements.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Leon. Appreciate it.
And Council?
You're welcome. Thank you.
In case you would like more information about the roundabout design, a representative for the project is here tonight, if you had questions. Yeah, come on up.
I'm Tyler Gatewood with Braun Homes, the developer and owner of the Casseta Ranch project. I would say one of the major challenges we've faced, and the reason the traffic has kind of been what it is, is because of the Bunton Creek flooding. We were required and worked with city staff, Leon, Harper, and other representatives to find a way to not shut down traffic 100%. Our original plan set had us detouring to the south, to the north, and actually shutting down the roundabout so we could get it constructed quicker. But from city staff and their feedback, they wanted to, and James Earp and Scott, wanted to keep the roundabout open, understandably because of the flooding that happens at Bunton Creek and Bunton Reserve residents being able to get out. So, that's really the main reason behind the time the project has taken. We've encountered a couple small items, GBRA waterline crossing, which wasn't expected originally. There were some waterlines that didn't show up on some old plans that our original engineer went and pulled up. We are, it's important, I know, City Councilmember Rizzo and Tobias, I think y'all were on an email chain with me over the last couple of weeks. It's important to understand that the roundabout is not complete. These roundabouts are designed with pavers in the middle to have large trucks, like the video I think y'all have seen, actually make it through without hopping the curbs on the outer side. They're going to hop the curbs on the inner side, and I think you would find that at probably 80, 90% of center roundabouts around central Texas. There are a few, few and far between, but there are some. But just want to assure you that the roundabout's not complete. We're in the process of working with Leon and Harper to address a couple of the issues that have come up. And if y'all have any other questions, please let me know.
Yeah, I just have one question. Have we looked at school buses? Will school buses be able to navigate it without jumping any of the curbs? And the concern is the safety concern of the children inside. I know we're starting to put seat belts in most of the school buses now, but that's still a little bit of a concern for me, but...
I have not seen a specific study on a school bus length. I know we ran some analysis on 18-wheelers, some formula for making turns, and our engineer came back and said that's, they'll hop the curb, but they'll be able to stay out of the outside curb line. I'm more than happy to go back and look at that. We've also explored the idea of cutting the curb down. Our contractor has done this on other roundabouts and other situations where it basically becomes a roll curb. Cut it down to where it's got about a 2-inch lip versus a 6-inch lip. That's one option that we've kind of discussed internally. I don't know that we've actually presented that to Leon and his team yet.
I like that idea right there, but also, I want to thank you as well. I know we've put a lot of pressure on trying to get this open, and we understand that it's not finished. But my instructions, Leon, was can we get it paved? Can we get it semi-open and close it during the least peak traffic hours? And it's something y'all have been doing, and I appreciate that. Thank y'all for going above and beyond with that. But getting it open was probably the number one concern for us, and we know it's not complete, but I appreciate all that you've done so far. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
This is Councilman Tobias. Again, thank you for responding on the emails. Again, the concerns, again, I have, again, addressing is the school buses. And just have an understanding, in that part of town in Kyle, it's very high in agriculture, and you have a lot of construction trucks that come in and out of there. One thing that I just brought up to mind is you're going to have a lot of tractors and a lot of the farm equipment coming through during the summertime when we start feeling all those crops out there. So, it'd be something to also think about if you're going to have to redesign that, if you have to go in and maybe cut the curb out a little bit. Like I said, that area, that usage in that road has a lot of agricultural equipment that comes up and down that road. So, it's just something to keep in mind, also, Leon, as well. Thank you.
I have comments more for Leon, but I mean, are we actually saying that school buses won't be able to go through the roundabout without jumping the curb? Is that where we're at on this thing?
And fire engines and...
Is it that small?
So, when I saw it, it looked like it was, the semi-trucks were hopping the middle curb and the outer curbs. I think saw cutting would take care of that, but I had a concern with buses. When I went out there and took pictures of it, it just, it seemed like a bus would have trouble navigating. I did it in my truck, okay, but if I would have been pulling my trailer behind it, I think I might have, I had to really, really slow down to get through there. So, it might be a challenge. Might be something we need to look at.
If I can jump in? Go ahead, Dex. Well, I actually still kind of have the floor. What I'm trying to say is that, like, if, we're never going to build roundabouts again. If we design a roundabout that is so small that a school bus can't go through it without jumping the curb, it's just that simple. We're not going to be able to do this again. And I know you like roundabouts. I know a lot of the people in the council like roundabouts, but it's got to be built to the right size to be able to handle a school bus without a curb jump. Now, I understand a semi- Now, I understand a semi, I understand we, our, our roundabout that's on Burleson and Marketplace has got areas, a flat area where if a very large vehicle needs to go through, it might get up over that lip, but, I mean, a school bus is not a semi. And I just thought that was a great point, and I thought your response is also great. Well, what are we doing if we've got, if we've got a situation where as school buses are going out there to Bunton Creek, every single one of them has to hop a curb to get out there? It's going to, it's, that's the kind of stuff that makes people not like roundabouts. So I don't know how that gets through engineering, if that's an engineering standard fix that we need to put through, or, or what, to make sure that these things are appropriately sized to allow for the traffic flow? Because if they're too small, they're going to drive everyone crazy going through there, which is seems, I'm just nervous that it is. It seems like it is. It seems like it was engineered real small. But I don't know. It's smaller than the one that, that we built, is what I was told, and that one's pretty small. But, anyway, I guess, no comments?
It is.
I mean, we need, we need to know. Scott, do you, you have thoughts?
Yeah, I do, Mayor. Thank you. So I, I'm not sure that the diameter of this, I did not review it. I'm not the engineer, but typically, roundabouts should be built to accommodate 110-foot-long a vehicle, right? That's, that's the longest, but that's a standard roundabout design. Now, it may be size constrained, but it should handle an 80-foot length of, of vehicle at minimum. Now, with that said, because of that length, roundabouts have a roll curb typically and have a mountable apron, and that apron's usually, you know, eight to 15 feet, depending on the design. So when we looked at it and saw the stand-up curb, that, clearly that was a problem, right? A roundabout should not have a stand-up curb, and it should have a mountable apron. So that's what we are expecting in this revised design. Now, a 40-foot, 45-foot, which is kind of the maximum length of a school bus, ought to be able to get through without wheeling up on the mountable apron, but the apron's there for that, just in case-
Right.
-that it's sharp. Semis, yeah, they'll come up on the apron, and that's what they're designed to do. But again, I don't, I haven't seen the, the design and the engineering to see what it's going to accommodate, but at minimum, it needs to be 80-foot wheelbase. And that's what we're going to hold them to.
So they're, so you're saying it is designed for an 80-foot, so something much larger than a school bus?
I am not an engineer.
Not the engineer. Leon?
I, I can say that our plans were submitted-
I understand that. I really do understand.
I don't take that criteria and go put it into CAD and design it.
I understand.
To your point on the apron, we do have a nine-and-a-half, nine or nine-and-a-half-foot apron that-
That-
-pavers that circle the roundabout.
But a two-inch curb's not going to work either. It needs to be a roll curb.
Leon, are you there to answer that?
Yes, sir. I'm not, I haven't looked at the design specifically of the, the roundabout. We have somebody, we have our engineer on staff that looks at our roundabouts. I will ask him to look at it closely. We did review the plans, we did make comments, and I'm going back to the comments and see what comments we made, see if our comments were addressed. So I'm a little bit concerned about that.
You want to get back to that, get back to us later on that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Next up, consent agenda.
Hold on, I've got more questions-
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Than that. So my, my questions are about Old Post Road and Wendy Hill. I'm on Old Post Road, so that slide, so I'll start there. Main question, and I did appreciate the call we had, I guess that was last month, with the county and other folks, Leon, you were on there, Scott, certainly appreciate that. Council knows, and anybody else has been paying attention, Old Post Road and getting that going has been something I've been balking about for a year and a half. And we're behind schedule on that, as far as what we were initially targeting, which was last year. So I won't air my frustration again about that. But, so the bottom bullet point says scheduled for council approval in February. So we can expect in February, hopefully our first meeting in February, approval of the agreement and the design and what have you, in order to get us actually going to constructing the road and turning dirt, correct?
That is correct. We plan to bring the interlocal agreement to council for approval.
Okay. So we're butting up any last-minute negotiations for right-of-way acquisition? Let's see. So are we pretty close on that? I know that typically is always the real pain point that folks don't think about.
I was, I'm actually been emailing them today, going back and forth, because we're, we're going to need to prepare some field notes, and I'm hoping they agree with what I'm proposing. And they've been real open to this, this trade, this switch, so they've been very, very open to it. I'm very pleased to hear that they're open to it. They're actually calling me wanting to know where are we with our, with our process. So once we get our, our contract together, get it over to them, and then we get them to agree to the little minor changes that I made on the right-of-way trade that we're talking about, then we're going to be moving pretty quickly to wrap that up.
And I can add a little more, more context to that.
Yes, sir.
Legal counsel Barbara Bolware Wells is the one who's working with the family on that, has a DA, a development agreement prepared, terms are being finalized, and I guess they were supposed to have a call during the holiday break, but that did not happen. So the content is there, the meeting has to be put together.
Post haste on that, certainly. Thank you for y'all's work on that, and continue to press that forward. And I appreciate this being a continual item on the CIP update of our agenda biweekly. Now we can move to Wendy Hill. Perhaps the slide that shows is the last slide for Wendy Hill? Yes. So just for the sake of reminder, and folks watching, and folks that will, will watch, so obviously that box right there is what's being worked on. That was the first phase. Second phase, we're calling the south half, which will be west of that, all the way to, is that, that street called Park South Street or Park South Drive?
On the east end.
Wendy Hill kind of bends there on the west side?
Yes, sir. And that's just a transition area. We're just transitioning.
Okay, so-
In other words, we're going from the two lanes to the three lanes.
Gotcha. So that will be widened essentially to that, to that area?
No, I don't think it's going to go that far. It's just that we have to do a little bit of work in that direction, but it won't be widened that far.
Okay. Can you tell me approximately where it would be widened?
I'm go- Councilmember, I'm going to have to guess, but I'd really, let me double-check on that. If I remember correctly, I believe it goes up just a little past Purple Martin.
Purple Martin. Purple Martin to Cherrywood, is the extent of the project. Purple Martin's the east.
Okay. So that, from Purple Martin to Cherrywood, that will actually be the widened part with the three-lane?
That's pretty much it. Yes, sir. Like I said, let me confirm that at the next meeting.
Okay. All right. That's pretty much the extent of mine. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments or questions on agenda item number eight? All right, then we'll move to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items number 10 and 11, unless someone needs to pull them.
Second.
I'm sorry. So you're wanting to pull the others? Okay. All right. It's been motion by Councilor Rizzo, seconded by Councilor Floris Kael that we approve agenda items number 10 and 11. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number nine, resolution of the City Council, the City of Kyle, Texas accepting the Sunset Hills Phase Two subdivision improvements. This is Mr. Barbara's item, but Mr. Rizzo's pulled it.
Yeah. Mayor Leon, we got an email today talking about this subdivision here from the school district, and I was wondering if you were able to see that?
That's on the annexation item down, down the way.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's the wrong one. I'm, I'm sorry.
It's not on consent.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm going to pull that back and make a motion to approve.
Number nine.
Sorry. I'm going to pull that back, then I'm going to make a motion to approve consent item number nine.
I'll second it.
All right. It's been motion by Councilor Rizzo, seconded by Councilor Tobias. They approve gen- item number nine. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number 12, authorize the city manager to apply for a STEP CMV grant in an amount no greater than $12,000 from TechStop, and authorize matching funding from the police department's approved operating budget in an amount not to exceed $3,500 to fund a STEP grant program for one year. Councilor Rizzo, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from Chief on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Council. This is Jeff Barnett, Chief of Police, for the record. You have items 12 and 13, they're both very similar. These are STEP grants, selective traffic enforcement program grants from the state of Texas. They've been around for a number of years, and all we are here to do tonight is to simply ask permission to apply for the grant. This first grant, the CMV grant, which is commercial motor vehicle, means that we desire to accept a grant, if awarded from the state, that would pay $12,000 in overtime funds for our Kyle police officers to go out and enforce commercial motor vehicle-related traffic laws. You have in your backup material the, the areas where we'll be doing that enforcement, which is along the state highway, primarily Interstate 35. The city would be required to match, which would be on top of the $12,000 that the state would supply. The state would match in their fringe benefits, which is the additional soft pay stuff that's associated with the hourly rate, in the amount not to exceed $3,500. The more close amount is about $3,000, but we put a small cushion in there, depending on which officer works. The, the effort would determine that officer's overtime rate. And that'll give us quite a number of hours to, to work in addition to their normal duties. This is considered overtime, and this will put about 200 more hours, a little more than 200 hours of additional traffic enforcement out in our community, all at the expense of the state. They will provide the funding, with the exception of that small match of $3,500 cap.
Could you elaborate a little bit more on the commercial traffic? What, what are you exactly targeting on, in that end?
Commercial motor vehicles are those recognized by the state of Texas as in transport of commercial goods. Typically, you would, you would identify that in layman's terms as 18-wheelers, box trucks, and other, other vehicles that are carrying commercial goods. So basically, are your 18-wheelers, your long trailers carrying commercial goods on the, on the trailers as well?
Okay. Are we doing a type of weight system? Is that what we're targeting this, or?
No, sir. Basically, no, sir. This is actually enforcing the state laws that are already on the books, that are already empowered to our officers. This is not enforcing the Federal Motor Carrier Act and doing things that you might see other specialized commercial motor vehicle enforcement teams, such as DPS, focusing on. This is basically enforcing the same state laws that our, that our police officers and traffic officers routinely enforce, but as they apply to commerce, to identified commercial motor vehicles. In the second grant, in item number 13, you basically see the same thing, but that is for your traditional traffic passenger cars and such.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for that explanation.
Yes, sir.
Chief, this is Councilman Tobias. I want to say thanks for bringing this across. The STEP CMV grant, basically, it, the, the objective of the campaign's correct is to reduce the CMV crashes, injuries, fatalities, vehicles from like semi-trailers and tractor truck trailers from the Texas Transportation Section Code 52203. Basically, well, most of the agencies will get your, your information from the, from the CRS, correct? From the Crash Records Information System, sir?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
That would also help you be able to monitor DWIs, people driving under influence, a lot of the hazardous moving violations, and also the speed for a lot of these vehicles. So I guess the only questions I have, and I think you already answered it, because I saw that the total amount we can ask for the grant is 12,000, but then there was a minimum of 3,500 on the agenda. But that just goes to pay for the officers' overtime or any other salaries needed for this enforcement, correct?
So I believe the answer's correct. I'll kind of clarify. So the state will supply to the city $12,000, and the state will expect that we pay that $12,000 to officers working overtime, so they'll make that as their overtime rate. That $12,000 will be paid to those officers working the STEP program. Then the city will match up to 3,500, which we think it'll be closer to $3,000, with the soft pay fringe benefits that are also built into our staff members' pay. Those officers don't necessarily see that. If you work overtime and your rate is $50 an hour, that's what you see on your paycheck. You see the $50. The other additional pays are for your other benefits that are provided through our fringe benefit program at the city, like we do with all positions.
Yeah. Yes, sir. That is true. Thank you, sir. Thank you for clarifying.
Yes, sir.
Councilor Ellison.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, get your back, sir. So on each one of these, in the backup material, we did have some maps. Would there be any way for us to pull that up? Scott? The maps that we had in the backup material.
I know where it's going to-
Generally, my question, Chief, good to see you, by the way. Happy New Year to you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Are there particular areas of the city that this would only apply to, or would this be anywhere within the city limits that we could use the funds in order to pay officers and whatever it is accordance with this grant?
So I'm going to take the first stab at it and make sure I get it correct. I have Sergeant Verona on here as well. He did the grant application. Basically, we've identified two zones, zones one and two. You see those highlighted in the area. Zone one is our northern portion of the city of Kyle, and then zone two, I'm sorry, zone one, that map doesn't really show the best example, but primarily it's along Interstate 35.
You scroll down, or if we have somebody scroll down, there's another map.
Yeah, there's another one that shows it a little bit more clearly.
There we go.
You can see the points. I can tell you that one of them on one grant is from Center Street to the northern city limits, the other half of that being the city limits of Center Street to the opposite city limits on 35. But I'll, if it's all right, I'll let Sergeant Tracy Verona queue in here to describe, to further outline his maps. But we do have specific areas, and yes, it is state highways.
Good evening. My life?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. You're good.
Mayor Council, Sergeant Verona, Kyle PD, Traffic Enforcement Division. So to answer your question, the areas of enforcement from data pulled by TexasBuckleUp.com working with TechStop, and yes, that data does get pulled, compiled from the crisp data we're talking about. So the, those areas for enforcement as outlined is where we would be enforcing. So it would not be applicable to anywhere. It would have to be in these areas, and as it's described in the verbiage, to and from these areas, so when the officers start their shift, if they were to, to observe a violation en route to that zone, that would be included. Otherwise, it has to be within that zone. So it's these zones that have been compiled, like KA did, they call it KA from the state, which determines those crashes that resulted in serious bodily injury or death, or injury that may result in death. And that's where those zones are created for.
So just to be clear, and thank you for that explanation, Sergeant. So on this map we're looking at, mainly it's the I-35 corridor from the northernmost part of our city up there, goes along the interstate there tight of the frontage road. On the west side of the interstate, it goes, follows along Kyle Crossing, then Colder's Crossing to 1626, and then 1626 back to the interstate. So that's the one area, if I'm correct, that's that black line you drew, so it would be to 1626, and then 1626 back to the interstate. So that's the one area, if I'm correct, that's that black line you drew. So it would be only in that area, correct?
Yes. Well, so we have two different zones.
And then there's another one. Yeah, I wanted to see if we could bring up the other map as well.
They allow this a maximum of four, either four linear miles per zone. So we got two zones created, and they almost touch there. But again, yeah, that was pulled from, if you watch those dots, or look at those dots on that map, that identifies the KA data for the last 12, the previous 12 months identified. So yes, to answer your question is, yes, those roadways that were outlined is, outlines the zones for, for example, this one's Zone Two. This is showing a linear four miles, and we just took in, basically from Yarnton to Indian Point, it's hard to see on that map, but it would be, I believe it was an eighth or quarter mile just south of the Kyle Parkway overpass. And Zone One, yeah, it incorporated their portion of 35, Coler's Crossing, and then 1626 back south to 35.
Sounds good. Certainly appreciate that explanation. So just to be clear, Center Street and on the east side of the interstate there, where it comes around 150, that is not included in the area that we're talking about, correct?
Well, so we have two different grants, and they are almost identical. The difference are the focus on CMV versus focus on what we call comprehensive, which is any other motor vehicle. For the comprehensive, there are also two zones, and one of the zones does incorporate Center Street up to Rebel Drive, and then on the east side, a portion of 150. I believe it's 150 right around Lehman Road, where you would experience some crashes at the intersection and so forth. So those zones are a little bit different from CMV to comprehensive.
Okay. No, but it all makes sense to me. I appreciate the explanation. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items 12 and 13.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Rizzo, seconded by Counselor Brad Shaw. We approve agenda items number 12 and 13. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I just have one last.
Technically, I have an open item 13. I don't know if that's a problem from a part. Okay.
I just have one quick question. If we get this grant approved, which hopefully we do, do we have the amount of officers that would be able to utilize this?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. For the record, Chief Barnett, yes, sir. Again, these will be officers that are working overtime.
Okay.
And we would have sufficient number of officers that will be able to cover this grant. The $12,000, I'll add, is a very small grant in the TechStop STEP program. A lot of other agencies and a lot of bigger programs, based on history and based on need, get tens of thousands of dollars. So this will be a small grant consisting of about 220 some odd hours of additional enforcement spread out over 12 months.
That's great. Good. It's good to hear. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Counselor Rizzo.
Paige, since we went into item number 13, do we still?
I got it from Scott. We're good.
You're good? Okay. All right.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero.
May I make a quick statement, please? I'll be quick.
We typically don't do statements between items.
Oh, well, it was about the previous, but it's okay.
It was about the previous item? Yeah, then go ahead.
Okay. I just, I just want the city admin to take special notice of agenda item 13, the Kyle PD Zone One map. According to the city, this area doesn't have enough traffic to focus on updates. However, according to this TechStop crash report, this particular part of Kyle has enough crashes to warrant extra attention. So my hope is that the city takes that into consideration, that although there may not be high traffic, there is high accidents, and maybe we can focus on fixing the roads.
All right.
That's our job.
All right. Next up, agenda item number 14. First reading and ordinance of the city of Kyle, Texas, annexing 29.792 acres of land, more or less located in Hayes County, including the abutting streets, roadways, and right-of-way into the corporate limits of the city, at the request of the property owner. This is Mr. Coons's item. This item has a public hearing. I don't think Howard's available. James is going to take it. Do you want to give a brief overview, James, and then we'll do the public hearing?
I'd be happy to. Mayor Council, for the record, James Erp, Assistant City Manager. Before you tonight is a procedural annexation. This is an annexation that results from the culmination of a process that the city began in 2015 of annexing property in and around Lehman High School. The property at the time was under agricultural exemption, so it was given a development agreement in lieu of annexation, which the family then transferred to the owners of Cassetta Ranch. Cassetta Ranch is now to the point of plating the property and finalizing that plat. And in order to do so, they're required to finalize annexation that was began in 2015. So that is the item that is before you tonight, is the procedural annexation of the property.
All right. Thank you, James. This item has a public hearing. Unless there are any objections, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on this item? We do have a statement that's been submitted by Max Cleaver, Chief Operations Officer for Hays CISD, as Counselor Rizzo brought forward, stating that he has some concerns about the way the lots are configured and the spacing of those lots next to Lehman property and future plans of those property. Scott, you said that, when I brought this up to you earlier, you said that y'all are continuing conversations and have a big meeting scheduled for Thursday. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
So with that, I think that it's probably okay, because this is first reading, this is posted, we can't postpone this, but I have concerns as well, based on what I've heard in the, in the report there. So it's my hope that y'all can have some discussion on Thursday and come to resolution. It's really between y'all and the school district, you know, love to participate in whatever. Counselor Rizzo can show up there as well. I think the best thing to do is to keep this moving forward, but we'll all be anxious to hear about how that conversation goes.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We'll add you to that.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Oh, okay. I did not know that. Sorry. Yeah. Well, you can, we can talk about that in just a minute. Yeah. Okay. We don't need to be talking this way. So we can, but we can discuss it afterwards, okay? Because you're not on record. Is there anyone who has any, are we still in the public hearing? Yeah, I just read that forward. We are in the public hearing. If you want to come forward and make any statements about the annexation, you can, but. State your name for the record.
Tyler Gatewood with Bron Holmes. I have, y'all brought up the Hays CISD and speaking with Max Cleaver. I have spoken to him a couple of times over the past couple of weeks. He has reached out about access to, from our community pedestrian access. We have incorporated that into our latest submittal on our preliminary plat. In terms of the lot configuration and how it lays out next to school, that's kind of new news to me, but I'll be interested on Thursday to find out what kind of the additional concerns are.
Okay. Thank you, Tyler. Anyone else wishing to come forward and provide testimony on this item? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. James, do you have anything to add? Does anyone have any questions or comments on this item? Counselor Floris Kell.
Okay. Please bear with me as I'm trying to go back and read something that's already been approved, meaning the developer's agreement. So I just have a few questions. In section 1.05, the term effective date is stated, but I am unable to find an effective date in the agreement. And I was wondering, am I overlooking something, or is it not in there?
I'm sorry, which section, Councilmember?
Section 1.05. And I guess the section is called term, but it says, "The term of this agreement will commence on the effective date and will continue 15 years."
And you're talking about the actual development agreement, not the ordinance?
Correct, but it was filed with Hayes County.
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I'm looking at the right document. Paige. Yeah. So the effect, go ahead. Paige can answer it, but the effective date is the date of the, of the actual development agreement itself.
Which is the 16th of June 2020.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. I'm looking for the specific provision, but it was signed on June 16, 2020. So that's likely the effective date unless the agreement defines another date in there. Just having trouble finding it quickly. So if there's additional questions, I'll look for that while you're asking me additional questions.
Okay. Section 5.04, land use upon annexation. Am I correct when I read that voting on zoning will happen no later than 30 days after the effective date of the annexation?
That 30-day provision addresses the timing of making their application for the zoning, and it has to happen, it has to happen within 30 days of the effective date of the annexation. The annexation is not effective until second reading of the ordinance, and somebody else may be able to speak to where the developer is in the zoning process. The zoning is not effective without it going through the process, which is public hearings and consideration by the Planning and Zoning Commission and the motion and vote of the council as well.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that there will be a vote on zoning, and so thank you very much for that. Right now, I think that's the only question I have. Wasn't too bad.
Okay.
Now, one, one thing to just be aware of is there will be a zoning case, but the development agreement, since the property is in the ETJ when this agreement was entered, it does provide for some authorized land uses and development standards for, for the property.
They're already building a roundabout. In other words, if we deny the zoning, they will still build. They are entitled to build, whether they receive the zoning or not, based on the development.
That is correct.
So the zoning conforms what is, in reality, to what they're entitled to. So if you don't, it'll just mean that the rules don't make sense, because they won't have the zoning. But that's where, that's, that's why they're constructing the roundabout now. They wouldn't be doing that.
So there's no vote on planning? This has already been done?
There is a vote on zoning, but they are entitled to the use of the residential in the configuration, because there's all kinds of things in the developer agreement. But yes, you can't stop the, based on the zoning. So, because if you did, they can still build, is what I'm saying. It's not about, I can't stop it, no one can. We've already done it with the development agreement. Any other questions, comments?
Mayor, I might just add, for clarification purposes, two points. One, this is not Cassetta Ranch proper. This is the extra component of Cassetta Ranch that they purchased after they began their project. But it also is under the development agreement that, that is being discussed at the moment. So, so it's not the whole entire portion, because that piece is already completed. This is the extra, and Tyler can say the actual acreage, but it's the, it's just a smaller component that was added on to the rest of the development. So that's one thing. And then the second thing is, to help clarify, I think, the question about the zoning, you know, cities' hands are somewhat tied whenever a property develops in the, in the ETJ, and as far as controlling the use, because the state has given preferential treatment to the landowners. And therefore, whatever the property owner has decided they want to do with the property at the time that they're going to request annexation, if they can prove that they have permits or they have begun work on that type of a use, they have a grandfathered protection for that use. So therefore, whenever we work on development agreements that will pull in properties in the future, we just have to understand that we're going to go through zoning and apply zoning, but they have a grandfathered right to use the land however they wanted to prior to the annexation. So that, that's another component that, that may, you know, help, help you understand as you're, as you're dealing with an annexation that then has a zoning, but they can already do what they were going to plan to do anyway. That's because that's the way that the state of Texas has set up land use protections for property owners.
Okay. One last question, under 2.02 residential. I'm just trying to get a good idea of what these places are going to look like. 2.02 residential, number, letter C, am I reading this correct when it states that the homes will be from outside wall to outside wall? They have the potential to be only 10 feet apart?
Five-foot side setbacks.
Yeah. So that particular component that you're asking about is talking about alley-loaded lots with 35-foot widths. We'll have a 10-foot front yard setback, a 10-foot rear setback, and a five-foot yard side setback. So that is 10 feet between houses, which is not necessarily uncommon.
You're right. There's a lot of houses like that in Kyle.
So, but they are 35-foot lots, correct, James?
Not all of them, I don't think. Tyler, you'll have to speak. I know y'all had asked, you'd asked for some opportunity to combine down, you know, one particular type of lot, but this is just speaking to the alley-loaded lots, which were in the original plan to be in the middle of the, of the add-on property. So they weren't all 35-foot alley-loaded lots originally.
Tyler Gatewood with Bron Holmes. Yeah, we are allowed up to 15% of the lots to be 35-foot wide lots, and then the remainder can be 40-foot wide and 50-foot wide.
So when you say 15%, is there a number that goes along with that? How's it?
15% of the total lot count.
And we don't have that yet?
We submitted a preliminary plat that has on this 29.792 acres, 130 homes. So I think, I think our submittal was 18, if I remember correctly, that are 35-foot wide.
And so 18 homes will be 10 feet apart?
All the homes in this subdivision will be 10-foot apart, which is per, which is in the standard ordinances for the city of Kyle.
Thank you.
I'm glad, I'm glad to see the other, the 45-foot lots. That's, that's a plus for me. I like the larger lots, so that's a plus for me. I was just wondering what the percentage of 35 was.
Yeah. And to comment on that, the 35-foot and 40-foot lots are alley-loaded. So your street scene is not all garage, 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 garage. We're additionally installing, per requirement, street trees. We have six or seven feet between curb and sidewalk for a good area for the trees to grow. If you make that too small, they'll, they'll get choked out.
Could, could we make sure that these trees are trees that are confirmed to this type of placement? Because I know we, during Plum Creek, they put the wrong trees in there, and they've had a lot of trouble with sidewalks and with streets and with pipes. So as long as we can make sure we were putting the right vegetation down, would be great as far as trees.
Yeah, I think we are using some native oak and elm species. And your, your concern is future sidewalks and roads.
Yeah. So really, no, actually, it was, what happened in Plum Creek is that they put these, I can't think of the name of the trees, what kind of trees they were, but they just grew this massive root system and came up and brought up some of the sidewalks with them, and even gave some foundation problems, some pipe problems to with sewer and water. So just making sure we were putting the right root system in the ground that's not going to do something to cost a homeowner something later down the road.
I just want, I just want to thank Councilmember Rizzo and Councilmember.
Floris Kell.
Thank you, Floris Kell. I just call her YFC for short, for asking those questions, because as silly as it sounds, those are concerns that our residents have, and I am a victim of a Plum Creek person. So I have experienced the closed homes and the trees, which are disrupting sidewalks, and like he mentioned, sewer or plumbing.
The trees are there by our insistence, so just as FYI, that's what, that's what's in his head. He's like, what do you want from me? I mean, I didn't want to put the trees in. I wanted all 35-foot lots and no trees.
Beautiful street scene when the trees do mature, but yes, we're up against a city ordinance and a concern about road and sidewalk repairs.
Yeah. And it's really just a function of our own ordinances to make sure that we require the types of trees. It's that he has to follow whatever guidance we have on types of trees. But yes, for sure.
That is true. You want to space those trees out, because this is Texas, and things are going to dry out quick. So it gets hot out here.
All right. We're not, we're not discussing, the DA's not what's before us here, folks. So we're a few years too late on this conversation, so it's enjoyable, but the, all right. So is there anyone else?
So is there anyone else who wishes to come forward on the public hearing, by the way, which we are still in and have not closed? Uh, all right, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing now. Uh, it is now closed. Is there anyone who wishes to discuss more on this item? All right, motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tobias. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Yeah, no, I oppose.
Okay, motion carries six to one. Councilwoman Floris Cal opposing. Uh, all right, next up, agenda item number fifteen. First reading and ordinance granting Acadian Ambulance Services of Texas LLC doing business as a Acadian Ambulance Services franchise uh, to provide non-emergency and rollover emergency ambulance services within the boundaries of the city of Kyle. This item also has a public hearing. Mr. Hendricks?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor, Council, for the record, Terry Hendricks, Chief of Staff. The item before you is basically a renewal of an existing franchise agreement that Acadian has uh, been providing these services with the city for the past two years. Um, I have spoken with uh, Chief Smith with Hayes County, San Marcos Hayes County M S, and they have no issues with continuing the, the grant franchise to Acadian. And James Mayer with uh, with Acadian is here to answer any questions that you might have. This franchise continues the same terms as the existing one with a two-year term and a three point five percent uh, franchise fee. Acadian has been on time with their reports and their fee payments. And um, if you have any questions, I'm available to answer them as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hendricks. Uh, this item does have a public hearing, so unless there are any objections, I'm gonna go ahead and open that public hearing. All right, it's now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. It is now closed. Is there anyone who has any questions for Mr. Hendricks or the representatives? Motions?
I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and approve the uh, Arcadian Ambulance.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Tobias, seconded by Councilmember uh, Bradshaw. That we approve agenda item number fifteen. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Is there any objection to this item being finally passed?
Uh, Mayor, the charter requires that franchise agreements have two readings, so this will be back on consent next week, at the next meeting.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, city managers' report.
Here we go. All right, it's on the screen. Mayor, Council, Scott Sellers, City Manager, for the record, the report tonight uh, begins with an update on the COVID testing. You'll see uh, the curative van is here through the month of January. Again, ID and registration are now required as before they were not. Uh, as well, we have a little bit of information about the vaccines. There are some locations available and becoming available. Please uh, visit that website on your screen for updates on the vaccination. We have another mass food distribution event on the ninth, so that is coming up very quickly. Uh, and it is a new location. Uh, we had a, an issue with the, the school, so we have moved to ACC Hayes Campus, uh, nine to noon, so same time. We still need volunteers and uh, these, these have been great events. We've had members of the community actually step up and, and donate to the food bank because of these events as well. So uh, just a, a great community lift here for, for those in need of food. City offices will be closed January eighteenth to recognize Dr. Martin Luther King. Junior. And then finally, uh, we have our TERS board meeting this Thursday evening. Uh, no promises, but we only have one item on the agenda, so I, I'm crossing my fingers that it will be brief. Uh, but, but we do need to convene that meeting and approve the agreement with the owner's reps. So that will be virtual this Thursday at seven P M. Council, that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions.
I just have a question about the food distribution. You said no uh, registration required. Oh my gosh.
For, for the food distribution or for the?
Yes.
Yes, food distribution, it's, it, no registration, just, just show up in your vehicle.
Can we just show up even if we can't stay the whole time? I would, I would still like to help.
As a volunteer?
Yes.
Okay, uh, no, so no registration is required for, for those receiving the food? The volunteers will need to, to, in advance.
Can I, so can I sign up for a time slot?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Councilmember.
So, so definitely.
Ashley, you can just show up and serve uh, any amount of time that you're capable there. They'll, they'll be happy to take your help.
Yes.
They'll need you from nine to three, though.
Yes, they do have an onsite, a registration form that you can, it's like basically just a waiver. Uh, I know there had been questions in the past, uh, this last go-around. People wanted to volunteer. I did get ahold of the uh, the person that does the registration at the food bank. Um, they welcome volunteers and they welcome people to come in. However, with COVID, uh, sometimes they may say on the website that it's full, which it could be, but it's a real-time situation. They don't know how many people will show up. So uh, like, just like the mayor pro team would say, you just arrived there and you get to sign the form and they can put you where they need to. And, but they won't turn you away, I'll tell you that. They'll use you for anything. It's a great event, you can see everybody out there. Uh, it's a great way to serve your community, so I strongly recommend it.
Councilor Rizzo.
Mayor, I just, I just want to take a moment to recognize some staff members. I know there's a lot of staff working on this, but uh, Scott Sellers, uh, Terry Hendricks, Samantha and her team. I just want to thank them, uh, putting these mass food distributions. We've been able to help over eight thousand families receive food and it couldn't have happened without a great collaboration. But we've always thanked all our partners and we've forgotten to thank our staff. So on behalf of a council member that has a little experience on putting events like this together, it's usually pretty hard when it's one person. This is the first time in, in my life that I've had a staff that's this amazing, that really mitigates a lot of that time and makes it a lot easier to put on this event. I just can't thank you enough for all that y'all do. Thank you.
Thank you. A lot of, a lot of staff, a lot of council, a lot of community volunteers. Thank you, it's a group effort.
Also the P D and the citizens on patrol as well.
Absolutely, yes, good, good point.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
I'm, I'm gonna stop calling for votes on adjournment. I see that's objection. I don't think I'm required to, so we are adjourned.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Good night, everyone.